Cool.
Ian, you have some more information?
In the budget, yeah, for my budget. Those are the repairs that were done to the car vehicle.
So the coming budget for your 2018 budget?
Correct.
Okay.
What's the account number?
It's maintenance, vehicle maintenance, but I did give you guys a sheet, I think, with the lines.
It's 4240.
4240, 20.
So there's a thousand dollars right now.
Yeah.
And actually seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents in the hole right now. Because of the two repairs that were done. One was two seventy-four seventy-four. And one was eight hundred dollars and forty-two cents.
So you're down to...
You've already overspent it.
Overspent that line, correct.
And even when you buy a new vehicle, you're still gonna have to maintain it?
Exactly. So I think if they could stick the thousand dollars in there, then it'll be back to where it usually is every year.
So make that line at two thousand?
Correct. And that'll leave nine hundred and twenty-five dollars in there. And I still have to drive what I have until...
Till you get your own, yeah.
So that would change that line to two thousand dollars. And it would change the bottom line to sixty-two thousand five hundred ninety-seven.
What?
Correct.
No, sixty-three thousand.
No, sixty-two.
Sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two, it already added a thousand.
Yep.
Right, alright. I move that we increase vehicle maintenance to two thousand dollars. And the overall building inspection budget, which is 4240, to a grand total of sixty-two five ninety-seven.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Yep.
Did they tell you how much the vehicle was worth trade-in or anything like that? No one will tell me that unless they bring it there.
Well, they gotta look at it.
Yes, correct.
And Jack?
Yes?
You should be able to, in February this coming month, actually drive that truck to, let's say, Quayle.
Yeah, I will, yeah, yeah.
And you can pick a truck out and they'll hold it until down here.
Yeah, that's right.
And just as long as we've... And give you money back if they don't pass the warrant. At least then we've got a solid figure on what we're looking for.
Yep.
We're all set with Article 11. Article 12, are we okay with that?
Yep.
Article 13?
We've eliminated it.
We've eliminated that.
Right.
And we haven't, we never voted on it, correct?
Right.
Yep.
Article 14?
That's where we just had the clarification on appropriation for this year.
Mm-hmm.
And the total amount to be included.
Okay.
Yep.
Article 15?
Yep.
And where?
Was Bergeron coming in?
There is some paperwork here about Bergeron.
HEB, yeah.
HEB.
HEB.
Are they expecting to do the bidding for us?
Well, that's actually something I want to talk to you about. Because the contract, you only talk about it now.
Yes, why don't you go ahead?
The contract is written for the bidding. But the contract is also written to commit the town to have them oversee the project after. For, I think, you'd have to look, I think it's an additional six to nine thousand. Because they feel like everything goes hand in hand. So for them to, you know, they do the design and they do the bidding and then to have it all go to another vendor would be, you know, so that's something that's important to have you talk about. Into the signature file.
Didn't we have a comment, and this isn't aimed at HEB? I seem to remember there was a conversation that just because we had HEB do the work up to now, doesn't mean that they were the engineer that monitored the project.
Right.
Am I missing something here?
You did say that, but they're saying...
We did discuss that, right.
And I think it was up to negotiation. What are your thoughts, guys?
I guess if the bridge were not in semi-closure mode, we could be a little more handed with this process and actually put on the street to engineers to come in and bid on it. I'm just concerned that we're... We have a warrant article structured based upon their amount of information that they've given us. If we're gonna change the process, then we just need to stay with this number and wait until after town meeting and start the bidding process at that point.
Mm-hmm.
The bidding process, from my understanding of how that was presented was, the idea was to get a harder note for a town meeting.
Correct, right. And have a project ready to go.
Yeah. I mean, from HEB's standpoint, I see where they're going from. They do a lot of work and then get shifted out of the deal at the other end.
Well, and if I remember the correspondence, what they're saying is that if, once the contractor gets into the project, I mean, they've designed a fix. Once they get the project opened up, if additional work, design work needs to be done, then their feeling is that they're the ones that need to do it because they're, they've, you know, stamped the design as approved. And while I appreciate that, the other side of it is, in terms of monitoring compliance to make sure that we meet state regulations and satisfy all the requirements, having an unbiased third party involved makes some sense. Jack?
That's what we've done in the past, is just have a third-party engineer do the inspections with the work done, nothing to do with the design of the project. Nothing to do with the bids going out, just a third-party.
We had Norway Plan do...
Construction observation agreement, and they just come look at certain points when it's being constructed.
Yeah, because I don't think you can get one engineering firm to buy into another engineering firm's design.
No, just to make sure the work is done to that design.
Do they want to do their own design and they'll...
Sure.
And that's their work product, yes, right.
So we're talking about two different things here, okay? One is, we're talking about the design work.
Correct.
Right? Which somebody's done.
Correct.
And has been blessed, you know, stamped and all that. The other thing is, the guy that's actually doing the work, is it meeting the specification? Is the design, is the work being completed to the design? Are the materials being used, meeting the specification in terms of, for instance, compressive strength of concrete and that sort of thing? And having a third-party do that piece, I think, is vital. So that's why it's...
We did that Lang Pond Road, we have a third-party coming to do that. Seems that third-party expects us to do other things in town.
Yes, we do. So I guess my feeling with respect to HEB is, there needs to be further conversation relative to this because it's not our intent to take any revision to the design away from the designer. But how do you have an arms-length verification of the work that's going on when...
It usually does not end up costing you more because HEB is gonna charge you to do the same thing anyway, so it just gets a different set of eyes in there.
Correct.
Yeah, we can make the contract conditional. We haven't signed it.
Lang Pond Road, I forget what, who they had do it.
Norway Plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, Norway.
It was a few thousand dollars, it wasn't a lot of money.
Yeah. And then they had some, they hired somebody to come and do compaction tests on it.
Yes.
So I guess it comes back to the one article, do we leave it at eighty-eight-five or...
I'm happy with it.
Yeah, I think we leave it where it is.
Okay.
And, you know, if we proceed in the next few weeks further down the road with getting the bids and that sort of thing, we change it. And, you know, if it's a late change, and it comes in less, it can be changed on the floor at town meeting.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Article 16, we've... Excuse me, come here.
So you do not want HEB to do the bidding? Is that correct?
I think we need to have a further conversation with them.
Have them come in, because we're...
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, maybe you can get them to come to next Monday's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Article 16, okay?
Yeah.
Yep, we did.
Article 17. It says here we did not...
No.
It was recommended by the board of selection, so we need to...
And not recommend withdraw.
Okay, I move that we withdraw Article 17.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Okay.
Alright. What do we miss?
Do you have anything in the order that you want to change or anything like that? You can let me know those kind of things.
It makes sense to have the library up front for two reasons, right? It's the big ticket item and it's also...
It's got the one-hour voting window, yep.
I mean, I can't think that...
I mean, if we don't get, if we don't get two-thirds on Article one or Article two, that was a pass by Article three. Because that's an easy one, to get two-thirds. All they're doing is changing the wording.
Yeah.
There's no money involved.
Yep. Yep.
Well, what can happen is, on the floor, we can say, can we wait until, postpone voting on this article for one hour until we find out, you know, what the polls say? Correct?
Yep, that's good.
Or include expansion and renovation of the existing library. If we don't take out the wording for the purpose of building the library, then you've got all of your objectives open to you.
That's right. Which is the way it's written, is to expand the purpose, not to change the purpose. Right. Alright. So do you want to move fire apparatus up?
What do you have?
In the order. In my memory, it seems to me we tended, in the past, to deal with the with the bigger ticket items earlier in the order. Not just going from memory, not from actually looking at old warrants.
So you're saying make Article...
Move Article 14 forward and...
Move it up after the library?
Yeah.
After the septic, maybe?
After the what?
After the septic, maybe? Do you want to keep all those together?
Yeah. Put the septic up there as well.
I do have the septic as four.
Yeah, it's four.
So we can make the fire apparatus Article five?
Okay.
And...
It's basically library and fire truck are the big items for this year.
The bridge.
Do you want paving number six?
Sure.
And the bridge number seven?
Oh, we changed that to, we changed the car, the truck by...
Yep. We took a down to twenty-nine thousand, yep. Was that the, that burdened budget?
I'm sorry?
Budget, vote on this. Two people voted against a new vehicle for railroad officer. Was it because they thought the money was too much? Or they thought that ten years was not long enough to be driveable?
Well, the ten years is not long, I think this is a spiciest argument, but the money was too much, that they could use to be down in twenties.
Okay. Do you remember, was it a money issue?
For one, it was a money issue, and for the other, it was debt. It was in fine condition, the individual had the debt.
It was in fine condition.
We have, yeah. We have changed the numbers, so the budget committee will have to revisit and re-vote.
Yep.
So I'll do my damnedest to convince them.
And he'll be there?
I've asked that Jack be there.
Jack will be there, too.
Yeah, him as well.
Well, and as I said last week, when you look at the maintenance work that we did on the truck last year, and this year, and potentially if we hang on to it, probably makes sense to put it on an eight-year cycle rather than a ten-year cycle. You made that observation, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's not... On a ten-year rotation, you're talking twenty-nine hundred bucks a year, and we spent damn near that this year, fixing all the money.
Right.
So...
Well, and, you know, I think we all, from time to time, particularly those of us that hold on to vehicles for a long time, before we get rid of it, in the last year or so, you say, well, I should have gotten rid of it a year ago because it's, you know, two hundred bucks here, a few hundred bucks there, fifteen hundred bucks there. And then pretty soon, it's like, every time you turn around, okay, well...
And another argument is, is that he more than makes up that income. I saw your hand up, sir.
I want to make a comment. This is probably one of those people that did say something at that meeting, I remember it well. The details of that truck weren't brought forward or explained. Didn't know about the gas tank, didn't know about the repairs, they didn't know all the other things that were running. So that's where those comments came from, those two people, I'd be the winner of them. If we knew the facts, I wouldn't have said anything at all. I just want that said, so, you know.
We'll revisit and have those facts this time around.
Right, exactly, okay, but I mean, we spoke about it, turn or not, we just didn't have all the information when we said it. Thank you.
One thing Jack did mention to me, too, was the money that he asked you for is if it passes that town meeting. If the vehicle doesn't pass, it needs more work above that.
That would question, that would be a question.
So just letting you know.
He'll share with the budget committee, too. Anything else on warrant articles?
Did you want to meet with paving number six and the bridge number seven, or is that important?
To me, it doesn't make a difference.
It's not important to me either.
Okay.
I mean, it's a big, big number change, but it really doesn't, if we do exactly the same thing that we did last year, take a loser out of the capital reserve, we can keep the tax increase to somewhere around three percent.
Yes.
You know, worst-case scenario, two dollars ninety-four cents a thousand, or two seven three currently.
Exactly.
So it's... I mean, our income level's up, but that's a factor of bookkeeping as well, the actual whereabouts.
So you'll take the fifty thousand out of estimated revenue as well? Health insurance, trust?
Yeah.
You all set on warrant articles? We've done building inspector, revisit, cemetery expendable trust fund, code officer vehicle. Now down to this folder that has two things. Substance use disorder prevention meeting coming up, is anyone attending?
Oh, yeah.
Where is that? It's a tri-county, maybe, care of cannabis laws. Cook Memorial Library at Taylor. Thursday, I can't do Thursday.
I can't do Thursday.
Do samples?
Okay?
Let me see. Alright, so it's up to me, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, I will put it on my calendar, how about that? And I will try to attend under six. So, what's going on?
Do you folks want to discuss the parking ordinances? I have a list of things that I wanted to talk about.
Not really, yeah.
Well-tabled that.
Yep.
Would that not be on the warrant this time?
I think we're running out of time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not clear in my mind, is do we go ultimately before town meeting? Or do we not? The other question I wanted to ask you folks, and please give it some thought as you go through here, I keep sent footnoting, we all go back to this law, go back to that law. I kinda like the idea that you guys do on the planning board. When you change something, you go through and there's the whole paragraph.
Yep.
So you change substanceively and all updated, you don't have to go...
So you can see where you started and you have to go back to it.
I do like, you know, what was provided.
Yep.
Will table that, please? This is for Monday's work session.
Yep.
Attached is a proposal for the design work at the beach. I need a selection signature and a deposit check. A five hundred dollar deposit is to come from Parks and Rec budget from the beach and wharf maintenance line. Have you folks read this? I saw it.
Yeah, I did, too. And I actually met with, or was that the meeting with Jim Ryan, the other guy? And set out a scope of work, which is pretty much all of this, which is what we talked about. He needs to do some examinations to figure out before he does his actual design. He needs to figure out where the water's going, what the conditions are, so...
So the five hundred bucks, we'll start him on that way, right?
Alright, move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'm a little ambivalent about having a butter on that ticket committee. It's not the cleanest way to proceed. And one of the things that I brought up at the meeting, which I'm gonna state on the television here, is that the permit that we originally had for that beach does not allow us to enhance the beach.
Correct.
But it does allow us. Everyone that I have had read it, who has a lot more legal education than you and I have, it said, absolutely, you can maintain it. So if it has lost material over time, we can put that amount of material back. So one of the things that Jim Ryan's was gonna examine was the original design, elevations, et cetera. And how do we get back to that, and as well as getting rid of the water before it's the lake, so. And I hopefully was able to, and Jim backed me up on that, saying that it's actually statutory that you can drill in no more than every five or six years, I heard what the number was. And actually replenish what might have gone away. So I hope that issue's off the table. But it wasn't before that meeting, they would not have had an issue with any material coming into that location, which just means that over time it's gonna be reduced to nothing.
I appreciate his concern, which is, he doesn't want to see the town continuing to add material to the beach that then moves and maybe ends up under his dock or,
Yeah.
you know, it impacts the other area adjacent to that. But the other side of that is material moves on the top. And
Yes.
So what we need to do, we need to make sure that what we do is consistent with what law and regulation provides for. And ultimately renders the beach usable for what it was designed to be.
Right. And our, and that's where it gets a little dicey. Our obligation is to the residents of Town and Park tomorrow. That's who elected us, that's who we represent. Not one resident, but all residents.
Yep.
So his motivations might be slightly different from everybody else's. And that's what concerns me about having this sort of cooperative commission that we've set up, a board for...
Yep. Clear in my mind. We also have, we talked about Sodom Road Bridge from HEB, and they'll be coming in.
Yep.
This is a supplemental warrant from tax collector for lot twenty-eight dash one dash thirty-seven. And it's a supplemental warrant for taxes and fees of fifteen hundred eighty dollars and twenty-five cents. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes three zero. Uh, just next is to be signed, it's the letter to Robert McKenna. The board wishes to say thank you for your service with the Tuckton Brook Fire Department. The time and energy devoted to the department is appreciated. Uh, next is Mr. White for NAP lot forty-two dash two dash thirty-five. This gentleman qualifies for the veterans' credit under the older standard RSA seventy-two twenty-eight as he served in Vietnam. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Excuse me, that's also for disability credit, just so you're aware.
It says disability credit here, where is it?
On my recommendation, does it say twenty-five hundred veterans, five hundred and two thousand disabled?
Uh, let's see, I recommend approve Mr. White for both tax credits for a total of twenty-five hundred. Five hundred for the standard veterans, two thousand for service, total disability credit. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay, that's what we're voting on.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next is for lot fifteen dash three dash thirty-five. Fifteen acres on Route one oh nine, intent to cut. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Is that the milfoil grant?
Yes.
Is that correct? No. Okay. No, it's Tuckton Brook. This is our state reimbursement grant.
Go ahead.
For milfoil treatment and harvesting for twenty eighteen. And this is same set of paperwork that we do every year, certificative authority and that needs to be signed by you.
Yes.
And then the other is all signed by the committee. Uh, it's a twenty-five percent reimbursement grant this year, which is the same as what it was last year. I don't have the total amount, if I do. So the, the, the total grant would be fifty-eight hundred dollars, but that includes work that most likely won't, won't happen, which is drag minis treatment. So probably around forty-five hundred dollars in reimbursement grant.
So we've got six hundred dollars on the milfoil line here, should we increase that?
Yes, yeah, we should.